All right. We are going to call this city council meeting to order. And with the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans, Ms. Hershey. Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin. Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
I don't believe we have any minutes this evening. Is that right?
No.
All right.
None available.
Are there any additions to the agenda? We've got a lot of staff members around. Any additions? Nope. Okay. All right. We have, first up, we have presentation and public input. Our first presentation is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4, Report and Stormwater Asset Management Plan called SWOMP. And this is Public Works. All right, you have the floor whenever you're ready. Please make sure that you turn on your microphones.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carmen Franks, the Assistant City Engineer with Public Works. And I'll let my colleague Kyle introduce himself. He's going to get started.
My name is Kyle Dobus. I'm one of the engineering technicians in Public Works.
Yeah, so first, we're just going to do a really quick overview of the MS4 permit report that was recently submitted. So Kyle's going to tell you about that briefly. And then I'm going to do a very brief update of our stormwater asset management plan, lovingly referred to as SWOMP. So, go ahead, Kyle.
So, the NPDS program is a mandate from the federal government that's implemented through the Illinois EPA.
Can you move your microphone a little closer?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we are a Phase 2 community in the program because it means we're a medium-sized city. With that, there are six minimum control measures. We have to meet every permit cycle to make sure that we're in compliance. And those are the six here that are on the slide. In order to reach those goals, we implement 45 different actions to do that that all collectively together meet the six minimum requirements. Some examples of these are the Champaign County Stormwater Partnership that we're a part of with Champaign, Savoy, the county, and the university that we meet quarterly to help support each other in our efforts to improve water quality. The Boney Creek Community Day, which is an event that we have every spring that helps pick up trash and litter through the Boney Creek Park primarily. It helps support our illicit discharge investigations, so making sure that the waterways stay clean. And if we have reports of anything in the water that shouldn't be there, that we can go and make sure that it doesn't get anywhere any farther and we can find out what's causing it. It helps us implement the erosion and sediment control program, which we use for every construction site in the city. It's managed by this, through this. We inspect all the detention basins in the city. We're working on getting onto a tenure cycle for that. Then also through this program, it's going toward credit from our cleaning and televising of our storm sewers as well as our street sweeping program. Recently, we just passed our audit of our last year's report. We passed with no issues.
Okay, and if there's any questions on that, we can answer them at the end. Okay, so the stormwater asset management plan. So if you'll recall, I met with each of you individually or in pairs back in late March to tell you what this was. So this was a project that started four years ago, so June in 2019. About a work, a year of work was done that produced a draft report and some public outreach was done. But then the project was kind of put on hold due to COVID. So the public outreach, there was not a lot of success with that because of COVID. And then there was a large staff turnover in Public Works. So the project was reinitiated last year, 2022. So we had a modified scope of work to focus more on our existing assets. And that transitioned the project from a stormwater master plan, you know, looking forward, to focusing on our existing assets more. And we turned it into the stormwater asset management plan. So how can we take care of what we currently have the best way possible? And then we also added a larger focus on public engagement so we can get more public feedback. And then, so what has been done so far? Overall, our consultant team and our team at Public Works, we have identified the system needs. So what data, do we need to close any data gaps? So what information is missing about our system? What equipment and staff do we need? And what are the system repairs that are needed? So they've also quantified a system annual cost of ownership. So that's the maintenance operations cost and replacements and rehabilitation of the system. And that's based roughly on the age of our system. And they, I spoke to all of you about how we've estimated what the age of our system is. With the lack of data, we had to use age of the neighborhoods to estimate the age of the system in each part of the city. And then with that, there's proposed infrastructure investment options. So this was broken into three main categories that you'll see at the bottom of this graph. We have our permit compliance, so the NPDS MS4 permit compliance. That's what Kyle just spoke to you about. There's a new Illinois EPA permit coming out any day now. We've been waiting for it for quite a while. But with that, we expect some new regulatory requirements. So a slight fee increase would help us take actions to make sure we're in compliance with that. Operations and maintenance in the middle is increased data gathering. Like I said, increased cleaning and televising. That category covers our street sweeping and our storm sewer pump station maintenance and a variety of other things, just keep everything operating and functioning. And that includes more minor repairs, so repairs as needed. And then the final category is capital and construction. So that's more proactive system where we're anticipating replacement needs and replacing and rehabilitating on a 50-year for rehabilitation and a 125-year cycle for replacement of the pipes and structures as they age out of our system. And each of these costs on the side are the monthly stormwater utility fee in terms of the fee per ERU. So that is what a single-family residential property is paying per month right now at the top box, the 560. So that's the status quo or our current system. The 577, and these are preliminary numbers. So these were rough estimates based on preliminary analysis that was done early in the project. Right now, our subconsultant, Raftalas, is doing the actual financial analysis to get these as more exact costs. So the 577 is that slight increase to help us meet the permit requirements. The 795, about $8 a month, would get us to cover all these operations and maintenance needs. And then the $25 a month is for the increased capital improvement projects or capital construction. And then putting it all together, if we were to do all of the things to meet all of our stormwater system needs, reduce risk as much as possible, we would be going up to a $27.22 rate per month. So like I said, we have more of a public engagement focus added to this scope once the project was reinitiated. So this is covering what we've done so far in terms of public engagement. So I met with you all individually back in March. I met with internal city leadership in early March. Did a presentation to the Sustainability Advisory Commission in early March. And then the rest is covered on the slide. So in mid-March, we had our first Technical Advisory Committee Meeting, or the TAC. So that's a group of local stakeholders, like the university, the county, neighborhood associations, Champaign, a variety of different people that were involved from the beginning, and some of the largest property owners. So the people who are paying the highest stormwater utility fee right now, we've included those in this technical advisory committee as well. So we had our first meeting back in March. Throughout April, we had coordination with Champaign County Chamber of Commerce. We had a representative come to that first Technical Advisory Committee Meeting. And we were coordinating with them to give them a presentation. They decided they didn't want that. We're continuing coordination now with them just to make sure that they are clear with what this program means and how it could mean an increased fee. We created a website for the SWOMP in mid-April. And then we've had multiple social media posts with this information in April and May. In May, we've shared this information in our Better Homes and Gutters eMagazine and the It's All About You City newsletter. We had a virtual public meeting on May 11th. And then I, you know, set up a city booth at the farmer's market and talked to individuals about this with a sign that said, "Ask me about our stormwater fee." So had some good conversations there. And then council meeting today, briefing today with you guys. So what are we currently doing and what do we plan to do? Throughout, so roughly about the time of the public meeting in mid-May, we put out a survey on the website. So we have a very, very brief survey. It's only two questions and an open comment box. So we're trying to collect as much public feedback as possible there. So that'll still be ongoing throughout this process. Throughout June, we were doing targeted outreach to some key stakeholders that I feel are going to be most impacted by the fee. So the school district, churches, specifically larger churches too that have very large parking lots are going to be paying much more their fees. And like I mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce. Also, specific neighborhood groups that didn't come to our Technical Advisory Committee Meeting. This week, I hope to have some interviews with WCIA and News Gazette. I plan to reach out to them after meeting with you guys today to share this information about these fees. We'd also like to put out a postcard notification to all stormwater fee payers. So I have every address of everyone who pays a stormwater fee to get this information out. Then we'll have continued social media posts. And we're tentatively planning our second Technical Advisory Committee Meeting in late July in hopes to come back to you on July 31st with a recommendation, a formal recommendation to you all for a fee change. And then give you roughly a month before we come back with a formal resolution for that fee change. So you can continue collecting public feedback after that and use that to help make a decision. I mentioned the survey is still available online. It will continue to be available. And I did already mention our financial analysis is being done right now by Raftalas. So that information will help us inform the recommendation we bring to you. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Questions? Therese?
Regarding the, that one big capital construction thing that needs to happen, that $6 million? Is there any way we can get grants or any other kind of funding to cover that other than taking it, the fee up to $24.87?
So there are a few grants available through Illinois EPA related to stormwater. They are very competitive. One is called the 319 Grant, and the application cycle for this year has reopened. So they have 4.5 million for the entire state. It's anything stormwater-related. Hoping to get our first 319 grant that I applied for last year, but that was only for $60,000. So that's very small.
What about the infrastructure thing that the president, that they passed earlier this year for infrastructure?
Tim, would you like to help me out?
Some of the public infrastructure stuff for this year, they just don't have the programs well-vetted yet. So, and stormwater is not the top of the list, unfortunately. It's transportation, clean water, sanitary, things like that are kind of the top of the list. And all the programs haven't been vetted out to be shared with people yet. So we're still kind of in the waiting game for that.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Can you give us a sneak peek in terms of what direction you guys are heading here? We've got four numbers on the table.
Yeah. I think internally, a reasonable approach that we've talked about is going up to about the mid-range here, the $8 range, because that would allow us to collect a lot of data that we would need to help inform that larger cost. You know, this capital construction estimate is based, like I said, on the estimate of our age of the system. So it isn't based on televising data that we would get about the condition of our sewers. But if we can get up to an $8 rate, we can collect a lot more data to help inform, you know, what we truly need to do these capital projects.
And is that a flat rate per house? Or is it based on the?
Yeah, for single-family residential properties, it is a flat rate right now. We are considering going up to a tiered system like Champaign does. For them, it's a flat rate until you reach a certain threshold of imperviousness. So say you have more than 3,100 square feet of impervious surface. That's your driveway, rooftop, any private sidewalks. Then the rate goes up to a higher fee.
Okay.
And that's just for residential properties. This, for larger properties like commercial, industrial, government properties, it's just based on your impervious area. So it's 560 per 3,100 square feet of imperviousness.
So I guess my, my final question for you is, what has the feedback been from all of your efforts, the farmer's market and the survey? Can you give us a slight summary? It doesn't have to be 100% accurate.
So far, it's been pretty positive, but I feel like we need to do more outreach. So we're here spreading the message and why we have this plan for the media interviews and the postcard notifications. I'm hoping that reaches a much larger audience. Because right now, when we reach other, you know, environmental specialists, environmental engineers like ourselves, there's a lot of support. But I don't feel like that's representative of the entire population that's going to be impacted by the fee.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, first, a question for you guys. Are you, do you see any issues with this timeline coming back to you on July 31st or in August 28th?
I would say that traditionally, we have not had a meeting at the end of July. So you might want to check people's schedules.
Yeah, there is no meeting on the 31st because that's the fifth Monday.
Oh, well, there you go.
Good, that's good to know. I'm glad I asked.
Usually, the last week of the last meeting we cancel, but thank you.
Then I will be back in early August.
Okay, all right, that works. Did you need anything else from council? All right. Thank you both. Appreciate it. All right, the next presentation is Special Projects Manager. And I think Tim is going to give this info.
Good evening. We'll get this up and running. Okay, so tonight, we're here, I'm here to give a little bit of a highlight on some of our Public Works Department highlights, specifically the Special Projects Manager, which is a plus-one FTE ask for our department. Summary of the proposal, like I said, plus-one FTE. The intention of this person would be to assist with CIP implementation, the facilities master plan implementation, which we're going to spend a lot on over the next few years, and other Public Works Special Projects programs and enhancements, which we have a fair amount of need there. Skills for this type of position is going to be Public Works leadership, experienced municipal regulations and contracting, public infrastructure operations and maintenance programming, and public infrastructure capital planning and construction. From an organizational need standpoint, over the last couple of years, I think when we talked about the CIP, we've, we've only really been able to effectively implement 50 to 65% of our CIP, which has been, you know, some of that is staffing vacancies. Well, a lot of that is primarily staffing vacancies and filling spots. That, that being said, is, that's kind of the baseline with the facilities master plan. We've got a huge slug of project management work that comes in. And to date, that's kind of been borne by a lot of like the departmental leadership, myself, deputy director, city engineer, where a lot of what we would like to be doing is forward-thinking, capital planning, you know, looking forward and then fixing policies and procedures to help our staff be more effective so we're not actually boots-on-the-ground doing project management stuff. Like I said, the facilities master plan is going to be a substantial project management duties. And we don't really have any new staff to take that on. So that's kind of fallen to a few different people, myself. I've kind of taken on the fire stations for now. Vince Gustafson, our deputy director, managed the citywide storage facility. And then our facility supervisor has taken on the lobby project that's ongoing now. And then, you know, offloading the fire stations would be nice for me. And then we've got the Public Works Campus Rehab projects and a few other miscellaneous projects in there that will take place over the next two to three years. You know, another big one is just avoiding departmental leadership burnout. When you're wearing a lot of hats, it draws on you to try to keep the project moving. You don't want to drop that ball. Nobody wants us to. But we also want to be able to support our staff and provide them the enhancements and improvements to policies, programs, processes, and procedures so that they can be more effective in their jobs. And it just, it weighs on people when they're trying to do too many different things. You know, avoid, the other big one is avoid continued degradation of our public infrastructure. Like we talked about in the CIP, we already are really not at like a sustainable funding level to maintain level of service with our infrastructure. So the more years that go by that we don't implement 100% of our CIP, the everything, the toll that it takes is the degradation of the quality of our infrastructure. And then sustainable infrastructure funding, talking about the SWOMP that Carmen and Kyle just presented on. You know, some of our other asset management plans are probably going to inform us of similar needs where we need to bolster up revenues to support things, which is just going to further the need for more project management support. How do we expect this position to address our needs? Like I said, reducing project management burdens on myself, our deputy director, city engineer, assistant city engineer, to allow them to be more effective at solving issues and impacting our staffs directly to make our, our staff as a whole more effective. You know, better planning, better outlook. You know, just, just everyday things. You know, we've got a number of policies and procedures. The Land Development Code that we brought to you guys a few months ago was 24 years without being looked at. You know, things like that are still on our books that we're just kind of dealing with right now. How will we know, will, how will we know if we've been successful? So, you know, how do we quantify if we, if, you know, staffing this plus-one FTE is going to be successful? You know, I think first and foremost is just higher implementation percentage of our CIP through FY '24 through '28 outlay. You know, and the facilities master plan implementation, avoiding any further delays. The master plan was done 2019. We've kind of got our heads wrapped around the funding, the financing for some of these things. And now we're to implementation. And, you know, if we pick that up and we drop other things, it just puts us behind the ball somewhere else. So, you know, I think the idea would be that our facilities master plan meets the schedule within the CIP as well for implementation. And then, you know, less quantitative, more qualitative is just more progress on reforming our outdated policies and procedures within the department. Get, you know, freeing some of the leadership team up to focus efforts on some of those things so that we can address more of these things. You know, permitted, permit processes, anything else that we can improve to enhance our efficiencies, really. A summary of costs would be $126,000 recurring, which is personnel costs, which would be salary, wages, benefits, all of the costs, total cost of employment. This would represent a recurring request from the general fund at this time that we would be looking to fund this position permanently with the idea that, you know, additional capital projects are going to come and grow. And hopefully, we're doing more and more of them over the years. So the intent would be for this to be a recurring request. With that, I'll take questions.
Questions for Tim. Therese, did you have a question?
Regarding, regarding, I do concur with you that we actually need this position. But the other thing that I wanted to ask is regarding the, the rest of the staffing at Public Works. How, how are we going to fit that, that particular? Are you looking to do a contracting thing right now? Or are you looking to have a permanent position developed and put in place?
I think the intent would be to have a permanent position developed and put in place. This type, this type of position actually helps us bridge a lot of gaps. You know, between engineering and operations, we have a lot going on. And this person would kind of act as a liaison that can help in operations where there's need, need for program improvement and things. But it can also help in the engineering side of things for the capital project implementation. So we've rolled out, in the last few years, we've rolled out a new work management system that still needs a lot of TLC that helps us track our work so that we can report to you guys better metrics about like, you know, are we effective versus the market? You know, is, is our operation staff as effective as we think they are? And really trying to get us better information for doing better asset management. So if we, you know, theoretically say we need to do 10,000 square yards of patching a year, like the Lucidity Work Management Program, hopefully, we want to get to a point where we track that where we say, well, internally, we're doing 8,000 square yards. We still need to outsource 2,000 square yards a year. That's a, a project that Vince has kind of taken on more. And everybody just kind of, what we're doing now is we're work-sharing a lot of this stuff. And essentially, what happens is everything kind of gets delayed longer than you'd want. You know, a one-year project is taking us a couple of years because we've got to fit it in with everything else. But yeah, the intention would be to create a, a position staffed within Public Works permanently.
Okay, thanks.
Chandra?
So would this new position be able to help with like grant searching and finding and application? Or is that outside of the, the scope of this, you think?
It's, I would say the answer is, that's not necessarily the purpose of the position, but the fact is, we all do a little bit of that. So it's not to say that this person couldn't do some of that. I mean, we wear many hats. Carmen talked about the 319 grant. She applied for that. You know, we've got the RACE grant that we went after for Florida Avenue that John Zeeman took the lead on, the SS4A grant for Lincoln, Washer to Killarney that John took the lead on. And, you know, we try to do what we can with what we have. So this person could totally be part of that. I wouldn't say that that's their specific role, but it's not necessarily any of our specific roles. But we, we are part of, you know, that funding process, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? All right, I have one question for you. Roughly, how many vacancies do we have in Public Works right now?
Well, tentatively, we just hired four maintenance workers, which is huge. Yes, huge. When I started here, so just about, not quite three years ago, two and a half years ago, we were hovering around 54, 55 FTE, budgeted at 71. Probably within the last three or four months, we have made, we've had a lot of success. HR's done a great job, you know, recruiting and helping us bring people in. We're, we're hovering at like 62, 63 FTE right now. The four maintenance workers further closes that gap. We're getting closer and closer to being back to what I would say is full strength. Now, you know, we've lost a couple here and there, but the fact is, we're actually making up ground now.
Right.
Because for two years, we were 55 steady. And now we're solid over 60 and growing. We've got a recruitment out for the remaining vacancies within our engineering division. We've got a recruitment out for all positions except for one part-time position right now. So everything is at least active out there.
Great.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much. Just going down the line today. All right, we have budget presentation, building inspector. I think Nick and our new community manager. All right, Nick, you're up.
Good evening. Kimberly Smith, Community Development Services Director. With me is Nick Hanson, who is our building official, who also manages our building division. And he's been with the city for eight years. You will hear from him in a brief moment. Our ask is to restore our building inspector position to a permanent status. Right now, it is a limited term. You have a pretty busy slide up here. The big takeaway from this slide is more than 25 years and beyond we've had a building inspector position. You'll see around fiscal year '20 to '21 that moved to a building official position. There are a number of reasons, which Nick is going to go into the detail about, of why that position changed. There's a little bit of an ebb and flow to that position in relation to the management of the division and also the director of the, of the, the department in general. The, the building official position absorbed for that short time the building inspector position. You'll also notice this is around the COVID time. You'll, in a little bit, we're going to show you our numbers as well. And you'll see a little bit of a correlation. The short of it is, the
Okay, as Kimberly said, in 2017, '18 fiscal year, the community, excuse me, the building safety manager was then promoted to the community development manager upon the retiring of the previous department director. So over the next few years, also during, you know, a time when the city was trying to, you know, save money and get themselves realigned, basically that person did a dual, dual role. They served, became the development director and also worked as the building safety manager. When I was promoted to the building space, or excuse me, the building inspector, I worked under, under him. And then when he retired, the, the new director at that point did not have the building experience. So basically, they, they looked at that, reorganized, and created the building official position, which became a civil service position, which then was, would be the similar to that of the building safety manager previously. So, and that was in the 2021 fiscal year. Then in '21, '22, during COVID, we asked to fill that position, however, being in the middle of COVID, we were only granted a temporary position, which was a three-year limited term position. We are two years into that term. It was posted on the website for well over a year, and we were unsuccessful in getting a qualified candidate. So as I mentioned, the limited-term building inspector position was approved during COVID. We had a limited candidate pool, unable to fill the position, and with the limited-term position, it, we're not able to, you know, one thing we really looked at is trying to get somebody in here that can build the rapport with local designers and contractors and create that stability. You know, and like I said, we had, you know, several, you know, applications, but like I said, nothing, nobody was, you know, nobody qualified that was willing to take that as a limited-term position. Benefits of having a full-time building inspector, more efficient plan review, obviously, right now, you know, I oversee the department, I do the plan review, I do the boots-on-the-ground inspections, you know, allows for better coverage for inspections, you know, if I'm off, you know, sometimes we have to rely on champagne, sometimes, you know, we're having other people that may not be, you know, certified. They're qualified, they understand what they're looking for and such, but again, it's just, there's some liability there as well. Increased public safety, it allows the depth of knowledge within the respective field. Again, like I said, you know, we ask other inspectors to step up, but, you know, they're limited to their knowledge and their ability. Again, provides qualified, does need for backup. You know, right now, you know, I cover it 24/7, so Monday through Friday, weekends, holidays, you know, if there's an issue, you know, I'm the one that's getting called. And then it also helps to provide for a succession plan, you know, shouldn't, you know, I get hit by a bus, or, you know, whatever happens, you know, right now, it's, what are we going to do? We're scrambling, because then we don't have, you know, somebody to lead the department, and we don't have somebody to do the inspections.
What you have in front of you is an organization chart just for the building safety division, and it shows you the gap we have without having a building inspector, dedicated building inspector position filled. It's simply critical to the mix, and it's something that makes sense particularly for a town of our size. So Nick is going to conclude with two more slides that will talk a little bit more about specifically what the inspector actually does and some statistics on the case and inspection types.
So again, responsibilities of the building inspector, it's going to be responding to inquiries from residents, developers. Again, you know, I'm that person, so, you know, amongst, you know, attending meetings, I'm the one that's receiving the phone calls. Can I do this? Can I build that? What do I need to do for this? You know, review building plans, conduct various inspections during the construction process, as I mentioned earlier, conduct the emergency inspections, you know, when a vehicle runs into a building, or, you know, there's a fire or a similar. Investigate complaints regarding construction, illegal occupancy, similar issues. Again, you know, that doesn't happen just Monday through Friday. Represent the building safety division at various meetings. So again, you know, right now, I'm kind of the expert, you know, for the department. There's, you know, there's not somebody that, you know, we can send in my absence, so. Again, this, this shows, you know, where, you know, many of our permits, you know, are above where they were, you know, three years ago. So again, you know, the workload continues to increase. I was just talking to a contractor today, it's, you know, for a town of our size, you know, in the economy right now, like, we're still doing things, you know. You know, we've done, to this point already, we've done over 100 permits for solar this year. You know, our, you know, with the Think Urbana program, you know, the residential, I mean, you know, is just booming right now, so. And we've got two, you know, new apartment complexes that are being built. So again, this breaks it down. I know it's a little bit hard to see up on the, on the screen, I think, but it just shows you that, you know, we are back where we were pre-COVID and still moving up. Is there any questions for us?
Questions? Will you be providing the slides to us in email?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Oh, my favorite fund, VERF. Is this going to be Elizabeth?
So while Ally gets this up, I'll just let you know, we had, we had significant VERF requests from several departments this year, and we just decided as a matter of efficiency to have Ally do that in one presentation, but we do have backup here from police, fire, and public works if there are specific questions.
All right, so the VERF funding request addresses the funding gap for operating in vehicles scheduled for replacement in fiscal '24, and this is primarily due to cost increase as a result of inflation. As you can, as you, as you have seen this year, inflation has been high, so that's mainly the cause of this funding gap that we're trying to address. And then second, fund items that should have been included in the VERF, but were not. And so one of the reasons those items were not included, and this is prior to our time here, those items were purchased in, directly in the general operating fund, and so those weren't captured in the VERF, and so those did not get included, or those items were excluded in the scheduled replacement plan. All right, and so just a brief background on the VERF. So the city collects fees from other city funds to pay for future replacements, and so this includes the general fund. And so, but rather than pre-funding at 100% of the projected replacement cost, the city's current policy is to fund 85% of projected replacement costs. This projected replacement cost is inflated using the long-term rate of inflation, which is 2%. And so, and then the city maintains reserves of at least 10% of the total value of assets included in the VERF for planned replacement of capital purchases. So the advantage of this approach is that it smoothes out the capital expenditure so that there are no significant expenditure timing differences, and this ensures that funds are available for scheduled replacements. And in the next couple of slides, I'll just go over through the summary cost information of the each department's request. So in the fire department, the fire marshal vehicle is scheduled to be replaced fiscal year '24, but this vehicle was purchased directly in the general operating fund and was not recorded in the VERF scheduled replacement plan. So there was no funds set aside for future replacement. And so that one-time cost of $35,000 is to fund for the purchase of this vehicle, or the replacement of this vehicle in fiscal year '24, and then the recurring cost of $4,000 would be the annual contribution to the VERF for its future replacement. And then the second item under fire department's request, the special operations truck and equipment, so this is to replace a, so replace three items. So one is a cab truck that they have and two trailers, which is, those three items are currently being used in fire operations. So those three items have been estimated to cost about $218,000 to replace all three, but for cost effectiveness, rather than replacing those three items, these will be replaced with a special operations truck and equipment that will be used for the same purpose, so with lower, slightly lower replacement cost, which is estimated at $199,000. So again, this, those three items were purchased directly in the general operating fund, and so no funds, again, no funds set aside for the replacement of those three items. So that, that is the $199,000 one-time cost to purchase these items in fiscal year '24, and then the recurring cost of $13,000 would be the annual contribution to the VERF for its future replacement. And then under police department, so the body worn squad car and interview room cameras, these are in the VERF scheduled replacement. But staff discovered that the current anticipated cost to replace these items now is about $450,000, which is significantly higher than what, what we have available to replace these items, so, which is at $255,000. So the one-time funding of $120,000, that would be the funding request coming from the general fund, and then the remaining $75,000 that's needed to cover the cost difference will be coming from the police special fund to help offset that cost increase. And then the recurring cost of $46,000, that is in addition to what we're currently contributing to the VERF fund for the replacement of this, of these items. So it's about a total of $99,000 annual contribution to the VERF to replace this in the future again. And then the mobile digital computers and docks, so this is actually scheduled to be replaced in fiscal year '25, but staff discovered that this is actually in need for replacement sooner than planned. So the one-time cost of $24,000, that is a one-year contribution to advance the replacement a year early. So there is no recurring cost increase associated with this. And then under public works department, so a number of equipment and vehicles scheduled for replacement in fiscal year, fiscal year '24, that we have available funds, however, those items that we have available funds are below their current estimated purchase price, and so this is again associated with a cost increase as a result of inflation. So that total one-time cost of $106,000, that is a total of those, all of those items. If you want a list of those specific items, I can provide those to you, but it's about nine or 10 items, which is also listed in the, the budget books items, scheduled replacement items. And then the recurring increase totals to about $15,000 for the annual contribution to the VERF for its future replacements. And then lastly, the Kubota utility vehicle, again, this was purchased directly in the general operating fund and was not recorded in the VERF. So that $75,000 is to fund for the purchase of the Kubota in fiscal year '24, and then the recurring cost of $8,000, that is the annual contribution to the VERF for its future replacement. And I believe that's all of it. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ally. Charisse?
Can you like really dumb it down for me and just give me a total amount of your estimated, I want to, I'm trying to follow as you, as you talk about it, estimated amount of all the VERF vehicles, what that cost is going to be, and a total of what we paid out for new vehicles? That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Are you asking about everything in the VERF?
Well, not everything in the VERF. Just what you guys talked about.
Yes. So that, I can get those to you, but, so it's just, so as far as one-time cost, that is not, the items that are not in the VERF, that would total up to, I can't calculate on top of my head, but.
465.
To what?
465.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what I want to know is the items that aren't in the VERF now, you're putting them in the VERF?
So those are, so we're just addressing items that are not in the VERF that are scheduled to be replaced in fiscal year '24. So we're not, we're not dealing with the ones that are going to be due in the future. So for now, we're just, this request relates to the fiscal year '24's budget.
Okay, see, this is why I was confused. Okay.
So, if you don't mind, I'll tell the next one. So the fire department is a question, an additional $134,000, police $150,000, and public works $181,000, additional outside of what they've already budgeted for.
So that, so that they can buy it, just buy it and be through with it?
Yes, this one time, and then after this one-time purchase, it'll be in the VERF, and that'll, that's a recurring.
There will be, yeah, that's what I was.
There you go. Okay. Other questions? James?
Just going to add that there was additional recurring costs to keep up that were listed in there.
Correct.
That, that would be ongoing, added.
That is the.
Put into the VERF to keep up with.
For the future replacement, yeah.
I have a question, and I'll ask, Phil Chief Sturz, right?
Yeah.
Officially. Chief Sturz to come up, to answer this question, which is, if we say we don't want to go ahead and replace the laptops this year, what happens?
Bad things.
Not going to do it for me.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Rich?
So our laptop computers is, is how officers receive information from our 911 center. So when an officer gets a call, all the information comes through on the computer. We have found that our Panasonic ToughBooks are failing. For some reason, we bought a two-piece deal where you can, it's almost like a tablet, and so the connection points, the pins are bent, we're losing connectivity, so.
And we're not going to buy those in the future?
No, we're not buying those again in the future. I don't remember what the VERF length was for the computers. It was something like six years for a computer, which is a long time for a computer that sits in a really hot and really cold squad car. So it would be problematic if we didn't have computers.
Okay, some, similar question for the cameras.
Sure.
Are they, are they just not lasting as long as we thought they were going to?
So the reason that we've got, they're at the end of their life, the batteries don't stay as long as they need, you know, we're required to have body cameras that last for 12 hours by statute, and they don't last 12 hours. But real, really what the problem is with the cameras, why we're asking for the money, is we cobbled together a bunch of funds when we first rolled out this program, and it just really wasn't an honest assessment of how much a program would cost. And so we got it on the cheap last time, and in advance of this budget, I had a conversation with staff about sort of what we were staring down the barrel of, and I, I found out fairly quickly that we were significantly under budget, but we only had about half of what we needed, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I have a question for the fire chief. Where is he? He's way back.
I'm behind you.
All right. What is, I know, we've had this conversation with the police department in terms of the replacement cycle for their cars, and of course, theirs is just left running all the time. What's the replacement cycle for yours? For the actual vehicles, not for the trucks?
Well, for the vehicles, those, those run pretty true. The issue that we have is probably about after 9/11, and TRT teams formed, technical rescue teams, and cities took on those, the, the equipment that the government gave, there was a distinction that had to be made between what is actual firefighting equipment. replacement cycle for their cars and of course theirs is left running all the time. What's the replacement cycle for yours? For the actual vehicles, not for the trucks?
Well, for the vehicles, those, those run pretty true. The issue that we have is probably about after 9/11 and TRT teams formed, technical rescue teams, and cities took on those, the, the equipment that the government gave, there was a distinction that had to be made between what is actual firefighting equipment and what is technical rescue equipment that we may not want to continue to fund. And before anyone in this administration, there was a, a decision made that some of our equipment was technical rescue equipment when it actually wasn't. So it was removed from the VERF and that's why we're in this situation now. So we met to decide what equipment should be, should have remained in the VERF at that time. And that's what we're asking for to be replaced. With the, with the crew cab, all of the, all of the timelines remain the same. So probably 15 years or so, depending on, you know, how often that cab was used. But what we're looking to do, like Ally said, is now combine those things. Instead of having one tow vehicle and several trailers, we're looking to get one truck that has the capacity to, to haul all of that stuff there together. So it'll be one vehicle instead of three assets, we'll combine it down to one.
And the turnover for the fire marshal's vehicle?
I'm not sure. Let me see what we've got on that.
You can get me the information later.
Yeah, yeah, we had to get the, I think it's, it's got, well, it says replacement in one, but that's, so about 12 years or so is what I think they've got on here in combination.
All right, okay. And then I just have a general question to Ally and Elizabeth. Given that inflation has really skyrocketed, you know, in the past two years, hopefully it'll start leveling out, has there been any discussion in terms of the amount of money that we are estimating for these items? Cause we just will be continually trying to catch up.
So, yes, we, we may be playing catch-up for a little while, but we think inflation is gonna drop back down to kind of a more normal, long-term level at some point. One of the things we're hoping to do, and this relates to the next request that you're gonna hear about, if we add an additional position in finance, we're hoping that we'll have the staff time to really do a thorough review of absolutely everything in the VERF and, and do a complete cleanup, which we haven't almost ever had time to do.
All right. Thank you very much. I assume that you guys are staying? Or is just Elizabeth staying? Or Ally's staying? I don't know. Okay, our next budget presentation is financial services staffing. Charisse?
Just one last thing, could you send us the PowerPoint that you did regarding that? I, I would appreciate it.
Yes, we can do that. So while, while Rob gets this presentation going, just, just a reminder, and we've, we talked about this recently during the current fiscal year with respect to HR, but everything that HR finance does is basically a support function for other departments. And we like to be able to support departments the way they would like to be supported because it makes them more effective. So ultimately, you see the results in their ability to deliver services to our residents. And so this is a, this is kind of a, Rob's gonna go through this, but it's kind of a behind this, you know, behind the scenes sort of position, but I think it is very important.
My name's Robert Kuzmanoff. I'm the deputy finance director. And this request is to increase financial staffing by one full-time equivalent.
Can you move your microphone a little closer and make sure it's on?
Yes.
Thank you.
The organizational need for this position in finance would be to provide essential, essential support and duties to the departments that deliver the direct services to our community. These job duties that are currently unable to be consistently performed, such as implementing new financial modules and services through our accounting software, procurement, new initiatives such as implementing P-cards and managing the VERF, as well as managing new revenues and serving as a payroll backup. Right now, some of these duties are being currently done by finance staff, but they get shuffled around quite a bit. This would allow us to strategically reallocate the job duties, as well as having more capacity to manage those special projects and special tasks. One of the big projects on, on the line is implementing of new financial modules. This would streamline processes and again, provide that benefit to the other departments that are supporting our, our constituents. Implementation and management of the new revenue sources. This position would serve as a financial services coordinator under the financial services manager in the organizational structure. And the cost summary, the one, we expect a one-time training cost of 2,400 and the total recurring cost, which is salary, wage and benefits, would be 111,600.
So I think with that, we're happy to answer questions.
Questions? Charisse?
Could you take it back a slide? Cause we have one financial services coordinator and you want another financial services coordinator, a full-time.
Correct. That's the classification we expect would be appropriate for the job duties that we're talking about. Obviously, we would have to write a job description, which would be reviewed by HR and, you know, obviously subject to their review and agreement that that's an appropriate classification.
So what, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, so what does your financial services coordinator that we already have, what do they do?
The, the one that we have now focuses primarily on payroll, but also has other responsibilities. We, we don't truly have any positions that have just one specific responsibility. That person also, you know, does work on the audit. They collect, when we have to bill for damage to city property, they sometimes deal with other types of claims. It's a long list.
Okay.
I have two questions. I was wondering if you could expand upon procurement and how this person would help with that process?
So right now, I'm basically the point person for procurement in the organization. There's not, there's not really anybody that has a significant amount of time to provide a supporting role for that. And one of the concerns is that I, I won't always be here and I'm also not always available because I spend a lot of time in meetings. So we would like to have somebody trained to support that function.
Okay. And can you also give me some examples of financial modules that you wanna update to streamline processes?
One of the financial modules that we're looking to implement is fixed asset management. Current staff, management of fixed assets has been a struggle for many years and even among other organizations it has been. This module as part of our software would allow us to streamline that approach. And it would let us know via our software what assets we have, where they are, what their current value is. And that ties into our audit as well as our financial statements and vehicle replacement. We have other modules as well, such as vendor self-service that would allow vendors to perhaps go onto our website and essentially set themselves up as a vendor in our system. So we get their tax forms, we get identifying traits and characteristics about that vendor that we can then use for reporting and providing feedback back to council or other stakeholders.
All right. I wanna mention one other, which is we don't currently use P-cards. And, and, and I, I know Tim would be thrilled because, because it would, it would make the, the process of purchasing smaller items much more efficient. I, I think every one of our departments would be very appreciative of that. But implementing that module takes a certain amount of time. And also, once you implement a new module, there's the ongoing work to support it, which we just don't have the capacity to absorb now.
All right. Charisse?
What's a P-card?
It's a credit card. It's, it's basically like, it's basically like a debit card and we, we can control and set limits on it in terms of what kinds of things people can buy and what dollar limits. So that small items that don't have very strict requirements for the purchasing process, they can take their card and they can go and, and purchase that item and be done. There's no invoice to be received later. It gets paid automatically, it gets reconciled in the system.
Like if you need a new printer or something, or something like that, or even something bigger and more expensive?
Well, we, we would have, part of the process would be establishing the limitations on the types of things people can buy and the dollar amounts. I think IT would say no to printers. It, it might be things like if the facility staff is working on a project and there's a tool they need that they don't have, right? They don't have to worry about necessarily going, going to a place where we have a charge account, they can go to the nearest place, they can get what they need and move on.
Okay, thank you.
James?
So that's an interesting addition to this discussion. So does the cost that we've defined here, that person would help implement and support the module that would let you do P-cards? But does that also cover like the compliance and the monitoring that you want, that you'll need to add if you have a, a P-card system being operated?
So we, we actually have the capability in our current financial system to do all the backend reconciliation and tracking. There would also be a vendor piece from the bank that issues the cards. And that would be part of the package that they would provide to us, but we don't actually have a person with the time to implement or deal with those systems and make sure that all that reconciliation gets done appropriately.
That's where my question is coming from, cause I'm familiar with that reconciliation process. And it does involve a lot of people time.
Right.
At a couple of levels, so I just wanna make sure.
Right.
That's built in, baked into the number that we're talking about.
That's in, that's in the position that we're talking about. I mean, there's a, and there's a, there's a control function there, right? If somebody's not doing what they're supposed to do, if they're not reconciling timely, we'll have to turn off their card. Because if people aren't following the rules, that's the consequence.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, last one. Budget presentation on HR recruiting, training, testing and update on HR changes. Famie is back.
All right, I'm gonna give kind of a high-level overview of three budget requests for human resources for fiscal year 2024. The first is gonna be a request for citywide recruiting. This is a request for $35,000 recurring and $5,000 one-time for a total of $40,000 in FY24. You guys have heard me say this probably over and over again, so I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but recruitment and selection is very, still very difficult, still proving to be a challenge. I, I do feel confident that we've been meeting that challenge, but we do still experience a high vacancy rate and we are still experiencing a competitive labor market. This particular budget request comes to address two specific challenges. The first will be public safety hiring challenges and the second will be planning for executive level vacancies. So we have been focusing a lot in the past months on challenges in public safety hiring for police, but our friends in fire are not, they're not, they're, the challenges are not lost on them either. So typically in firefighter recruiting, those recruitments would take place every two years. State law allows for those lists that are created to last for up to two years. What we're finding in the last two recruitment cycles is that the number of applicants on those lists are dwindling. In fact, this last list that we created back in April, I believe, of this year, had less than 40 applicants on the list. Those applicants are also on other lists and so those, those applicants kinda disappear as we, as we go down the list to hire. So we're finding that every two years is no longer adequate and we will probably be, well, in the, into the foreseeable future, have to recruit for entry-level firefighter EMT annually. We're also finding that our traditional recruitment methods for firefighter EMT are, again, yielding smaller lists, so we're gonna have to expand our recruitment efforts beyond regional, beyond just statewide, but we're gonna have to begin recruiting nationally. There are additional costs associated with that. And so about $10,000 of this request is intended to address annual firefighter recruiting. The other $25,000 is to anticipate hiring an executive search firm for executive level vacancies. Our last executive search yielded, as you all know, to amazing hires. And so we would like to continue down that route for filling executive vacancies. I do wanna point out that there is still significant HR staff time that gets dedicated to executive level searches, even when we do hire an executive search firm, there's still candidate engagement, there's still, you know, internal events to plan, there's still lots of staff time. And so having the help of an executive level vacancy, or search firm to, excuse me, source candidates, get us a good qualified and diverse applicant pool, we have found that that's been beneficial to us. And so we would like to anticipate being able to hire or contract an executive search firm at least once a year, so that we have adequate funding to do that when necessary. So the impacts if those two things are not funded, well, first, we have minimum staffing requirements in the fire department based on a couple of things. The collective bargaining agreement, first, with IFF has a minimum staffing number that we have to keep staffed. And then we also have the safer grant staffing requirements that we have to keep up with for right now. So not much of an option, but to keep filling those vacancies as they occur. We also, if it's not funded, we anticipate we would have to reduce other recruiting activities and resources. And I think you've heard tonight, we're continuing to add new positions that will need to be staffed and filled if, if those positions are approved. And we have, again, a pretty high vacancy rate right now. We've got about 40 vacant positions currently, real, real vacancies that are, that are budgeted and not staffed, that need to get filled. So those, those recruitments would be taken away from if not funded. Another impact is that if we, if we commit more HR staff time to searches that are these executive search, executive searches, it takes longer. Quite frankly, the, even with the executive search firm that we hired for director of community development services and police chief, both of those took upwards of a year or more. And so we don't want to leave those positions vacant any longer than we possibly have to. The second budget request is gonna be for $30,000 one-time in FY24 for police sergeant testing. The police sergeant testing is on a three-year cycle. The last time we conducted a promotional exam for a police sergeant was in 2020, so essentially we're up, it's time to do it again. Those lists by statute are allowed to last three years, so we do have to create the list. And the way that process works is typically we hire an outside assessor to come in and do assist with exam development and proctored assessment centers. We do use traditionally third-party assessors for test validity and for impartiality. That's pretty commonplace in public safety promotional exams. If that request is not funded, we will face potentially an inability to meet legal and CBA requirements to create a new list because the, the 2020 list is expired. And then the final budget request for FY24 is $10,000 recurring for additional citywide training. So. training. So as we're continuing to hire and promote new employees, that means we're going to have to train newly promoted and newly hired employees. Training employees is imperative, honestly, to employee engagement and to meeting performance indicators. Staff development is required to keep people, you know, hone their skills, increase their skills, and also it's a mechanism to continue to perpetuate our organizational values. We do have many new and first-time managers and supervisors in the city currently. In the past year, we've hired several, hired and promoted several first-time managers. That particular employee demographic is kind of a specialized group because when people are new in the organization or they're just taking on supervisory and management positions, that requires a different skill set than typically what people are used to. So we would like to be able to offer some structured supervisory training. We have identified some training needs as some peer-to-supervisor training, some equity and engagement training for our managers and supervisors, which we think is, I think, is imperative and will help our managers and supervisors be successful in their roles. The impact here, if not funded, is that we could face potentially only being able to train a subset of managerial staff. That's a possibility. We could do that. I think that would lead to some morale issues and some inequity issues, quite frankly. And lack of training could also lead to job dissatisfaction and performance impacts, which we know affects retention and retention is just as important as recruitment. And with that, I will take any questions.
Questions. Chandra?
So the $25,000 for this executive search firm, you said that's reoccurring?
Correct.
So even if we don't have any vacancies for a year, it just like piles up in the pot or?
No, generally funds that aren't spent just roll into fund balance at the end of the year unless we have something under contract, we have a purchase order and the funds are encumbered, and in that case it will roll forward.
Other questions? So I have a question. I think this is more for Elizabeth. You know, having $35,000, roughly $40,000 for recruitment selection, we have 40 vacant positions, right? So we're not paying people right now. So my question to you is, why are we putting money towards recruitment and we're not taking out of salaries to fund it?
So that's an interesting question. One of the reasons is because our city code says we can't move money between departments without a budget amendment, which makes it impractical to do that on a regular basis, to sweep all those salary accounts and move it into HR to use for recruitment. But our city code has a specific prohibition on moving funds between departments or between personnel lines and other types of expenses without council approval.
But this is the budget, right? So we're approving the budget right now. Would it make sense to look at the 40 positions and take that amount to fund this?
But we don't know what the 40 positions are that are going to be vacant next year, right? Like, we know what the 40 positions are that are vacant now.
Right, right. But even if you do the 40 positions now, that's going to give you more than $35,000 for one month. It's just a thought.
Yeah. No, I understand what you're saying. I think this need is going to be ongoing. Even if we were much closer to fully staffed, I think we're still going to have this need into the foreseeable future. And so if we, what you're suggesting, we could do that to address it one time, but it wouldn't address it for the long term, I think.
All right, James?
I had exactly the same question, but the answer that you shared implies that you can only spend out of the HR budget for advertising because we do this all the time. We have vacant positions in particular departments and HR does coordinate the advertising, but the charge goes against the budget that has the vacancy as a code that is, this is what we're spending it on. So we don't have to, you know, change which budget it's in. You know, that's just a thought of flexibility that would allow us to do this because I agree. I mean, it is, it is saying, we're going to have empty labor positions, so we're going to have an overage that would just go into the fund balance if they're not filled, right, in the long term, but we're going to create another slot of money to pay for the advertising to fill these things. So at the end, we're not, you know, in the end, it's probably not to a great impact, but you're not going to need the money if you get, fingers crossed, fully staffed, right? That's why having it being spent out of the departments that have the vacancies is flexible and works forever, whereas doing it right now for the current model, maybe this makes sense to catch up, but in the future, we don't know how many people are going to be gone and when they're going to be gone, which departments are going to be gone out of. I just think that there's a more flexible way to do this in the future that ties the expenditures on recruiting to the department that has the vacancy so they have the spare funding to do the recruiting.
I mean, there might be.
Not for the executive search, by the way. That's a higher cost. I understand that's an outlier and maybe the vacancy doesn't cover that or line up right for that, but...
I mean, I think that's something we can examine. I'm not ready to say right now that we could do that. I see a couple of challenges with that. Sometimes when we have a vacant position, there's an enormous cost for overtime to backfill the position. So for example, particularly I'm thinking of firefighters. We have a vacant firefighter position. Generally, if that causes us to be at minimum staffing, we're calling somebody back, we're paying somebody overtime. It can actually cost more and so there is sometimes really no significant savings. So I think it's something we can consider, but I'm not ready to say at this moment that that would work. We're just going to give a quick, little quick update about the whole HR and the generous budget amendment that you approved back in October, I think?
Yeah, so you guys didn't ask, but I'm happy to tell you that we have indeed moved into the new building downtown at the corner of Race and Main. We have filled two of the vacant HR positions that you guys allowed us to budget for. In that budget amendment, we anticipate that the other two will be filled in the coming weeks, so we will have a fully staffed, fully functional HR division here very soon.
And I expect that at some point we'll have an open house at the new office.
So Elizabeth, just stay for a question. I have a quick question for you and Carol. First of all, I'd like to say that I do appreciate everybody kind of coming and telling us about what their needs are for the department. And of course, we have the introduction in the, in the budget book, but one thing that I've heard consistently, specifically with the fire department, police department, and HRs, there are certain things that we are mandated to do, right? We have minimum staffing. We have to get body cameras that last for 12 hours. There's certain things that we have to do and I think it would be helpful for council to be able to see that list, like here are the things that we have to do and here's how much it costs us of new requests.
Oh, for, yeah.
The entire budget.
Yeah, I was going to say, at one time many years ago, I had a list of all the unfunded state mandates before I even came to work here and it was many, many, many pages.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, their public input is not on here, but this is the time for public input, is it? I was expecting a number here, so my apologies. So it is time for public input. If you'd like to address this body, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Is there any electronic communication from council members? Do you like to speak? Please, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon or good evening.
Can you pull the mic down?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? My name is Eldris Melinda Carr and I wanted to just make a few comments about the community programming for the, what you call it, TV? I don't have my written stuff. The TV programming, I think it was like a week or two ago where there was mention of the funding being discontinued. So I'm speaking regarding that and my church, the Underwoods, had been doing the programming for a while during, before the pandemic and they had, you know, became ill and so they weren't doing it for a while. And now we have a new pastor. He wasn't able, I thought he was going to be, he's not able to come, I guess, but, and I left my phone, but I spoke to him about it today and I know that there's an interest in that. And so I don't know what that would look like because I know it's being proposed not to continue. I don't know about any other programming, but I didn't want to speak on, you know, our church had been doing it and there may be some, maybe we did different types of things with the schools and they did a really wide outreach. And so I just wanted to state that, you know, before the pandemic, before the pandemic, they were doing it. During the pandemic, they were ill and we didn't really do very much, you know, with that part of it. Of course, we have, you know, Facebook with our church and we were doing that during the pandemic, but as far as the TV portion and the programming, we didn't do it. So there is some interest and I just wanted to mention that. It's something to think about as that comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the body? All right, with that, we will move on to council input and communications. Would anybody like to provide input? Charisse?
Just real quickly, I'd like to congratulate the employees that obviously work diligently in this building. The air conditioning is really, really working. And so, yeah, thank you for that. If you could like make it a little bit more temperate within this room, I would really appreciate it. I can't feel my legs. So anyway, that's my comment.
Chandra?
Ward five will have the Balancing Act Spending Priorities Event on June 21st at Town and Country Apartments from 9:00 AM to 10:30. It's an opportunity to sort of play with a city-type budget to let the city know what your spending priorities are. So I will be posting that via Facebook and the city Facebook page will also be sharing that. But June 21st, Town and Country Apartments, 9:00 to 10:30 AM. And I'm sure like the mayor or maybe Carol will probably be announcing this, but Juneteenth event for the city is happening on this Friday, next, this Friday, this Friday at noon. We'll be raising the flag and reading the proclamation. So encourage everyone to come out for that, too.
We're going to be doing a lot of this over the next couple of weeks. The Ward Seven Balancing Act Community Engagement Event is scheduled for Wednesday, June 28th from 3:30 to 5:00 PM. That'll be held at Steer Place, which is right there on Colorado. The front entrance is actually on, is on Harding, East Harding Street. And it is, I would add that we talk about, it is a tool to help us with the comprehensive plan about investment in the future. There is an implication because it talks about budgeting and I want to make it clear that it's not about the current city budget. It's not an exercise for input into the current city budget. It is, it's an exercise into future investment and what people value as far as what our comprehensive plan should focus on going forward. So I hope people of Ward, I assume you can go to any of these even if you're not in a particular ward, but I hope people of Ward Seven can come out for that on the 28th.
We're just going to go down the line. Jaya?
Yeah, we're just going to go down the line. So the one for Ward Four that we're talking about with the Balancing Act activity scheduled for Wednesday, June 28th as well, but from 6:30 to 7:30 at Tiger Academy slash Freedom School. So we do hope to see folks out to provide input on that. I also just wanted to add with all the presentations that we're having related to the budget, which again is separate from the Balancing Act activity, I'm really glad to see this effort to increase staffing. I think that's something that we hear a lot about the impact on the city's ability to provide services when folks are stretched so thin. Especially appreciate like the recognition of when people are stretched thin like that. It does lead to burnout and so I'm looking forward to seeing that increased capacity with bringing new staff members on for the next fiscal year and look forward to improving it.
All right, I won't repeat everything. I'll just give you a date for Ward One, which is on the 22nd at Channing Murray from 6:30 to 7:30. So if I remember correctly, I believe Chandra's Ward is the earliest and then Ward One is on the 22nd and then Ward Four and Ward Seven are on the 28th. And when is your Ward, Charisse?
Ward Three will be doing the Balancing Act and the whole thing with Imagine Urbana on the 20th, Tuesday.
Oh, she's first.
Which is after, since everyone's announcing the day after, because we're going to be closed on Juneteenth, of course, on the 19th. And this is something I had planned on being there, but I also have to be here. So for council meeting, but it'll be from 6:00 to 7:00 at Dr. King Elementary School and that's on Fairview Avenue. And I'm going to try to be at two places at once for a minute, at least. So that would be on June 20th. It's Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00 at Dr. King Elementary.
All right, thank you. Next up is unfinished business. I don't believe there is anything. I'm looking, usually we have staff updates, but maybe it's down here at the bottom. All right. Reports of standing committees. I don't believe there is any. And then we have Committee of the Hall, Councilmember Charisse Hershey. Would you please report back from the committee?
Okay, Committee of the Hall. Come to you with consent agenda, items for approval. Ordinance number 2023-06-017, an ordinance approving special use permit 1202 East Harding Drive, Plan Case 2469 SU23. Number two is a resolution, number, resolution number 2023-060-065R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement for Visit Champagne County Foundation African American Heritage Trail. Resolution number 02023-06-066R, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Lincoln Avenue corridor study from Florida Avenue to Green Street. Resolution number 2023-06-067R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Lincoln Avenue Complete Streets Project from Washers Street to Killarney Street. Resolution number 2023-06-069R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Florida Avenue Shared Use Path from Lincoln Avenue to Race Street. Resolution number 2023-06-068R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor... Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Florida Avenue Improvement Project from Wright Street to Hillcrest Street. And resolution number 2023-06-070R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Baker's Lane Shared Use Path. And I'd like to move that for approval from the council.
Second? Moved by Charisse and seconded by Jay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We do not have anything on the regular agenda. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers.
Thank you. I want to thank Chandra for making the announcement about Juneteenth proclamation on Friday. And Charisse referenced it, but on Monday, Juneteenth, the city will be closed for regular business. So only emergency business will be handled that day. And then the city council meeting will be the following day on June 20th. Those are my announcements.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? All right, new business, there is none. And we have discussion for fiscal year 2024 budget wrap-up.
One more time. So as I, I know you're all aware that under state law, our budget has to be approved by the end of the fiscal year. And in order to make that happen, Ally is already working on the budget ordinance that will be presented in committee next week. So we just wanted to have a chance to check back. I know there was a question last week about, well, if we wanted to, somebody wanted to propose a change, what would be the, what would be the right way to do it? So I do, I do need to say that ultimately, we, we create this lovely budget document. We have this nice presentation. Ultimately, the budget is really the allocation of funds to various programs, services and projects. It's about the numbers. So we wanted to give you an opportunity, if anybody wanted to propose a change, and that could be an addition to the budget or removing something from the budget, we want to give you an opportunity to raise that now. If you don't, we'll proceed and we'll prepare that ordinance for committee next week. Obviously, changes could still be made at committee and then we would provide a revised ordinance the following week for approval on the 26th. So just an opportunity for last questions or suggested changes.
I, I will say that we are missing two members who I'm sure might have some input. So I don't think anything will be finalized tonight. Are, is there any questions or discussions, Jaya?
Yeah, I, I think especially with Grace and Chris not being here, I do want to reinforce what Grace brought up last week of, we had the conversation about equipment, police, for the police last year. And I think making sure that language is included this year as well is important. And I know there's a much larger conversation about that, but it was specific to ALPRs.
Chandra?
During the building inspector presentation, they, they didn't indicate what the cost would be to bring that position back up to full-time. Could you tell me that?
So, um.
I'm, I'm sure it's probably in here, but I could.
I think Kimberly might have that.
It was what?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four thousand.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be getting some phone calls between now and next Tuesday, but unless anybody, Chandra?
So going back to what you and James had talked about with how, I know you said you had some reservations and, and whatevers. Could you possibly like run through that prior to next week to see if it's, I don't know, if it's possible to, maybe not for fire or police, but maybe for public works or whatever? Could it be department-specific?
I think that's something we could have an internal conversation about, but I don't think that's going to happen by next week.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think that would involve a change in our administrative policy that talks about how we manage the budget internally. And so that's a conversation we have to have with all the department heads. It's, it's, it's not, just not going to happen that quick.
And I tell you why, because I don't know if I'm really filling the 25K for the exact search firm. I'll just be honest.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Elizabeth?
If I could. So when, when we bring the ordinance next week, again, the ordinance is about the numbers in the budget. And so I know there, there's some discussion about, there was some discussion last week about LPRs that I don't know that the, I don't think that the budget is the place where we make that restriction. What, what that is, is I think a proposed restriction on how we can spend funds. It's not actually a change in the budget because the LPRs aren't in the budget.
I think that's a subject that we're going to try and cover. We have, we, we covered it with, we, we've had one two-by-two so far and everyone else is still scheduled. So we're going to try and, and cover that in the two-by-twos we have scheduled for this week. And then we'll see where we go with that. So, but thanks for reminding, reminding us about the request.
James?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say a little bit about, about that. And, and I think the concern is the, the budget is an authorization to spend money to accomplish departmental needs. If there's issues of policy with regard to how a department is going to conduct their work, I think we need to work on policy as opposed to budget. Because the problem is, why, why do I say that? I mean, if there's a concern about a particular, I'll use drones as an example because that came up at the county a decade ago. They didn't want the sheriff to buy a drone and fly it around. And, and the challenge was, you know, once you've authorized the money for the budget, the department can spend it and doesn't have to come back to get the money anymore. But what was at question was the policy. And the problem with trying to, through the budget, define policy is things change. And so if you want to try to control policy through the budget, you're going to have to enumerate all kinds of things that you don't want to have happen or change them as time goes forward. That's better done, in my, in my opinion, through policy. So I, the, I think the thing that Grace mentioned was ALPRs, which is automatic license plate recognitions, which came to this council as a proposal and it, and it did not pass. What Grace is concerned about is that by authorizing money, that equipment might be purchased because it has been budgeted, even though it's against the expressed majority of the council that we not go down that path. If we, if we, if we feel like the need to do that, whatever the topic is, I'm not going to say it's that specific topic. I think we need to do that through policy. Because doing it through budget, the, the budget is a plan for spending. It is not a, a plan for policy or it's not a place to put controls on how the city is operated. We own that too, but we own that through specific policy resolutions, ordinances. And so if that is the concern, we could have passed an ordinance or a resolution associated with that at any time over the last, you know, nine months, 12 months to say, you know, this is not a tool that the city of Urbana will use in law enforcement. And then it doesn't matter how much money is there, it's not, it's not on the table. Now, without being, I mean, we only have the vote that we took on that one item more than a year ago, I think, at this point. And it was a close vote, right? So, so there's, I understand the concern about undermining maybe the will of the council on a policy through an authorization of budget for spending. But if we're really that concerned about it, we need to be explicit and bring that thing to a vote as a, as a resolution. So that's my thoughts about that.
Charisse?
The other thought that needs to be reminded, remembered as well, is that that was coming strictly out of the police department's budget. They actually said that they were willing to give up that amount of money, $50,000, to be pretty, I think that's pretty much what it was at the time, to try, try this as an experiment and it was voted down. Regarding what you said about policy, I do not believe that based on one person's feeling, belief, whatever, that anyone can say, we won't fund a particular, because they disagree with it. We won't fund something based, that would be helpful for, that may actually be helpful in regarding public safety and investigation with, with certain communities, to be honest. And it was, it wasn't something that was coming out of the general fund. It was coming out of the police departments, coming out of their budget. So that's how that was going at the time.
Yeah, I think I might have to refresh my memory of, of how this conversation went last year because we certainly had it last year about this particular issue. And, and I hear that in terms of policy. But we also do have a responsibility to, to be involved in the guiding process of, of approving a budget. We're not here as a repress stamp and making sure that we are actively involved is, is important. And so I think, like I said, we can certainly review how this conversation went last year and then what language was decided upon. But again, especially with having members not here and not having clarity last meeting on when was the appropriate time to have that conversation, I think it's really important to raise it. I at least was not confused about where, you know, we're, we're getting stuck on this one particular item, but this is the particular item that has come to attention, right, for multiple years in a row. And I think, you know, at least for myself, I wasn't confused about where that funding was being requested from. But that's exactly why there's that request for that clarification in the budgeting process is that if ALPRs were to come forward, that the council should be involved in any future decision because it has already been voted on and rejected by the majority of the council. And so I think that that is important, you know, as we are reviewing this budget, as we are looking at distributing funds, this is a guiding document for how we express our priorities through the money we spend in the city, right? Yes, it's the, the actual dollars and cents, but where we decide to put our money is how we decide that we are investing in this community. And so it, yes, I understand those limitations and we can certainly explore policy-related options, but that particular request has already been brought up multiple years in a row, including by council members that were not able to be here tonight.
Charisse?
Just one more thing regarding what you just said. I think priorities are basically subjective. So when we're talking about where our priorities are, I think that depends on where and what a particular area is actually experiencing at a particular time. So what's prioritized is always going to be subjective based on where we are in, not just in history, but where we live. So I just want, you know, that's just something that, that needs to be, there's no right priority. Priorities are, you know, things are prioritized according to how we deal with them at the time. That's just how, that's just how it goes, you know? When you, when you need something, you budget for it or whatever. We need all these positions that are open, so we're budgeting for them now. It was, you know, so our priorities are going to be subjective accordingly. So that's all I'm saying.
I'm like, for myself here. So it was just, yeah, can you take the chair, Charisse?
I take the chair and I recognize Mary Alice.
Thank you. So when I look at the, when I look at the budget book, we have all these different categories, right? That's, that's how the budget is laid out. And let's pretend for a moment that ALPRs is $50,000. We're just going to pretend that some amount of object is $50,000. As I go through this budget, there's no place it's going to fall that is going to cover that amount of money, right? So all of these things, basically, all the departments say, we need X number of dollars for supplies, X number of dollars for monitors or whatever, right? And so that's all laid out explicitly in the budget. If I look at the police budget, I don't see where they're going to get $50,000 if they scramble around without coming back to council. So that, that's my two cents on, on this issue. We did have a conversation about it and it was decided at the time that it really wasn't necessary by the end of July, I believe, beginning of August, somewhere around there, that we were in alignment with the budget and the priorities at that time. But anyway, those are my two cents. So I'll take the chair back.
I relinquish the chair back to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. The last item on our agenda is very long and Carol has graciously agreed to tell us all the mayoral appointments. So I'd like to propose that Carol read out all of these appointments and that we do one overall vote on it, unless people have a request to remove some name off of it. So that's, I'd like to proceed. Carol?
All right. I will begin with the mayoral appointments as opposed to reappointments. And for these, I will, I think the mayor's, what she typically does is she'll read some background for the person and their statement of interest. And then for the rest, the reappointments, I'll just read the names and, and what they're being appointed, appointed to and the term. So for, these are new appointments for the Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees, Robert Kuzmanoff, the Deputy Finance Director for a term of June 12th, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. I don't have a background statement for him because you recently appointed him, so hopefully you remember that. The Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, Rob Bennett, for a term from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Rob is a four-year resident of Urbana and is the faculty IT support at UIUC Center for Innovation in Teaching and Learning. He provides support for faculty and teaching assistance on using multiple learning management system platforms. Rob comes with a deep knowledge of technology, multimedia and production technology and is involved with various community activism and advocacy groups, including the CU one-to-one mentor in Urbana Elementary School. And so here's his statement. "As a curious, art-driven child growing up in a very small town, access to nearby larger public libraries like Urbana Free Library shaped my values and saved my life. I've therefore been passionate about the value of libraries and especially public libraries throughout my own adulthood. When community context is taken into consideration, the Urbana Free Library is perhaps the single best public library I've encountered as a resident. I am always impressed and awed by the things Urbana Free Library has achieved that are unmatched by many library systems in more populous urban areas. My late brother and most recently my mother have served on Urbana Free Library's Board of Trustees. I see the possibility of my own service on the board in turn as one small way that I could give something back to our community and selfishly get a front row seat to the incredible goings-on at Urbana Free Library. I would look forward to this opportunity to serve the library, its staff and our community as a member of its board." Brandon Mason, also for the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees. Brandon Mason, also for the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, for a term starting August 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2025. Brandon is an eight-year resident of Urbana and is a physician, associate program director, and assistant medical director with Carl Foundation Hospital. He serves on the board for the Illinois Academy of Family Physicians and is the president of the Illinois Chapter of the American College of Osteopathic Family Physicians. This is his statement. "This board interests me professionally because of my background in education. I have long used library resources and continue to do so in my career today. The library is an excellent community resource that can provide so much to those who are willing to use it. It also interests me personally due to my almost-three-year-old daughter. We have used the children's section of the library and find this to be an underutilized educational experience. I would love to be part of the board to help not only maintain the current offerings, but to help improve and build new programs that could revitalize the library and make it a more used institution." And then finally, also for the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, Liz Sands, for a term starting July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. Liz is a one-year resident of Urbana and is the Assistant Marketing Manager at Common Ground Food Co-op, where she has many duties related to marketing, communications, outreach, and engagement. She recently joins the United Way Emerging Community Leaders Program, which guides young professionals through the world of nonprofits, volunteerism, and fundraising. This is her statement. "As an avid reader, I was thrilled to move just a few blocks from the Urbana Free Library and stop in regularly to check out new books. We have also done work with the library through the Co-op's Roundup for Good program, and I have always been impressed and inspired by the work being done there. My career has allowed me the ability to get more involved with our community and form partnerships with many organizations who are all working to provide important services to our neighbors. And I have recently begun my journey of working towards this goal in my personal life. I'm very excited to begin learning more about how to serve as an effective community leader through the United Way ECL program. And I would be thrilled to enhance these skills while serving on the Urbana Free Libraries Board of Trustees. I have always loved and appreciated libraries, and the Urbana Free Library in particular has always been such a unique place where people can gather to read, learn, communicate, and share experiences. I believe my enthusiasm for both books and our community put me in a strong position to be a valuable asset to the board." And then for reappointment, I'm just going to read the, the board or commission, the term, and the person. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, for a term ending June 30th, 2026, Annie Adams. To the Civil Service Commission, for a term ending June 30th, 2026, Tom Betts. For the Community Development Commission, term ending June 30th, 2026, Robert K. Freeman. For the Design Review Board, for a term ending June 30th, 2026, Dustin Allred. For the Historic Preservation Commission, for a term ending June 30th, 2026, Trent Shepherd. For the Plan Commission, for terms ending June 30th, 2026, Dustin Allred. Chen Zhiyu. For the Police Pension Fund Board, for terms expiring June 30th, 2025, Rod Eldridge, who is a city retiree, and Elizabeth Hannan, the Human Resources and Finance Director. To the Sustainability Advisory Commission, for terms ending June 30th, 2026, Andrew Stumpf, Luke Westocker, and Morgan White. To the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees, for terms ending June 30th, 2026, Mark Pelmore. To the Urbana Tree Commission, for terms ending June 30th, 2026, Carol Augsberger, Scott Dossett, Alex Julius. And last but not least, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, for a term ending June 30th, 2028, Adam Rush.
Can I have a motion for approval?
I'd like to move that all of the applicants be approved and added to their boards and commissions.
Do I have a second? Moved by Sharice and seconded by James. Any discussion? Sharice? I'm sorry. Chandra?
This may have come up before and explained before, but please refresh my memory about the appointments extending past the mayor's term. Like 2028 and, yeah, 26?
Oh, boy. I, I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't suppose you do.
On some of these things, I think the terms are set for particular time periods that may end up carrying over. I understand. I think it kind of begs the question of, you know, if a new mayor wanted to come in and try and make, you know, new appointments, these kind of carryover situations, you know, are ones I think that are okay to be able to make those appointments over the current mayor's term because of the way the board and commission actually works for the membership and the length of the term when you have to appoint them for that term.
Am I correct in saying that our, we have, is it an ordinance? Is it part of the ordinances that create these commissions and boards? And on that, that's what sets the terms?
There should be, yes.
Okay. Yes, James?
Yeah, the discussion we, about limiting the length of the mayor's appointments was about staff positions. I do know for the Urbana Free Library, for example, that's a three-year appointment. That's related to how the library board is created in conjunction with city ordinance and state law. And so I don't, I don't think we could appoint someone for less than three years at this point, except to fill out a vacant, a vacant term. So the limitations that we agreed to and that we discussed at length was about the staff appointments, the positions that are employed by the city. And those were the ones that we limited to the end of the mayor's term. I think we talked about two years, or the reappointments would be two years to the end of the term. So, so I don't, I don't know that it's a concern that any of these... I'm pretty sure zoning a board of appeals is a five-year term as well because of the length of service. I don't know if that's tied up only in our ordinance or state, state requirements.
Typically, what I review in terms of the appointments are the ordinances that establish the boards and commissions. Because typically, even if they're consistent with state statute, most times you'll see that really just brought into the ordinance that creates the local board or commission. When I, and again, not that I did the research enough to look at these things, but whenever the indication that term is on there, I believe that should be consistent with what the ordinance provides for, for those particular boards and commissions. So I would agree. My, my initial assumption, reaction would be is that, that term length right there is built to what the ordinance provides for that board.
Yeah, and I would also expect that in May of 2025, if we have a new mayor at that point, that the mayor, the new mayor could ask people for their resignation since they are mayoral appointments. They don't, they don't have to give up. They don't have to resign, I don't think. It's not like, President, you serve at the pleasure. But, so there is that opportunity. If, if there's a change and somebody is in conflict with the new mayor's perspective, that, that's an approach they could take.
Carol?
I also have word from the, from Kate, who works on these things in the mayor's office, that each of these, and as Dave was saying, they're established by the, whatever, whatever ordinance establishes that board or commission dictates the length of the term. So it doesn't have, and I'm glad you asked because I didn't know the answer. But it's, it's not, it doesn't coincide with the mayor's term.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, they are approved. With no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.